Good evening all, welcome back. Welcome to the September tenth twenty twenty four business meeting of the Board of Education. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think everybody here is familiar with the emergency exits. So we will need a motion for the approval of order of agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will start with the clerks report, ma'am.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the business meeting August twenty 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 four, and be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the special occasion held seven twenty nine twenty four.
I need a motion for both, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comments because we'll recognize who wish to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. So we will start with Mr. Clemmenson, since we have no students of the month yet.
Not yet, happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year.
Happy new year. January says a few days off, this is where the new, this is where the new year is. We are sitting just at about two thousand students in Hampton Bay. I always, I don't put the actual number up right now because in the first couple of weeks of school, we're processing new entrants that came to us just at the very end of the summer and then identifying the students whose record requests are coming in. So the real number for enrollment doesn't truly settle until October, but we're just at about two thousand students right now. We're off to a really strong start, you're going to hear from a number of our leadership team members today, who, tonight, who worked throughout the entire summer to do a lot of hiring. We thought it was going to be a quick, we don't have that many positions to hire, to really, a number of new faculty members and staff members on the team, which is, which is great, but it was a busy summer. So I'll leave it to the buildings to talk about the meat and potatoes of what's going on, but we are back full speed ahead. Tomorrow, we have our September eleventh remembrance ceremony. I will say this tomorrow, but there are now officially no students who were alive during nine eleven September twenty, September eleventh two thousand one, and there are three teachers who are on staff who were born after September eleventh two thousand one. So yeah, feeling old, Larry? So with each passing year, it does, it becomes less of a living history for people. So the Hampton Bay Fire Department, great partner of ours to do a benediction ceremony with a wreath that will be placed outside at the veterans, at the fireman's flagpole on Park Grove Avenue. So that, that begins at nine thirty. Before we begin that formal ceremony, there'll be a little bit of a joyous moment. Sylvia Katina Smith turns one hundred tomorrow. If you had, if you saw the happy birthday Sylvia sign on Argon Road, she was valedictorian in the class of nineteen forty seven, I think, forty six, do the math, nineteen twenty four she was born. So in the forties, she was, she, nineteen forty two, I think, so she was valedictorian nineteen forty two. Generations of her family went here and were successful, and she led the American Legion Ladies Auxiliary for a number of years. And so before we begin the remembrance ceremony, we're going to take a moment and recognize Sylvia on her hundredth birthday, and then we will have a shift and pivot to the remembrance ceremony. So it'll be a special morning at the elementary, thanking Mr. Meyer, Mr. T for always hosting and putting a special program together. While that's happening up here, the first shovels go in the ground tomorrow for the pre-K playground, which you can see right there, that is not Hampton Bay High School in the image, but an AI computer-generated image of a school. This, this will go just on the south side of the campus here. We have two pre-K rooms that have extra entrances that are fenced with a walkway to what will be roughly a forty by forty space for our pre-K students. Thank you to Assemblyman Fred Field for directing capital grant money in that direction to pay for a good portion of this project. We've talked to our neighbors, they're excited, not necessarily for the first couple of days, but they're excited to hear giggles of four-year-olds on the pre-K playground. So a huge step in the right direction for our, our program here, it with Scope and Just Kids. So what's next to come is the permits for the elementary school playground enhancement, and so we're hoping that happens later in the fall, October. The whole playground isn't going to come down, but pieces of it are. Some of the pieces that were probably intended for when the middle, the elementary school had fifth and sixth grade, and so they're not as used, and we're going to make that really, really improve that space too. So let me turn it over to the elementary school and to welcome you back with Mr. Meyer.
Thanks, Mr. Clemmenson. Good evening, it's my pleasure to give you our elementary school update. Always looking to avoid the dreaded summer slide, and we were very fortunate to have many hardworking students this summer. We had two hundred of our students attend our summer learning academy and extended school year programs. Ms. Hutchison, our coordinator, was very pleased with the progress. As Mr. Clemmenson just mentioned about our UPK playground, we hosted on August twenty eighth a UPK meet and greet to meet all new students, all new parents, and of course, their teachers. Mr. Clemmenson gave me the night before permission to tell our new pre-K students about the playground, and I have to tell you, I never heard a cheer so loud in my life. Those pre-K, they were excited, you could not have given them better news except maybe ice cream for breakfast. They were happy, so it was great news to start the year off with our pre-K class. August twenty ninth, our kindergarten meet and greet, happy to say all our kindergarten students have new Chromebooks. One of the things I always admire so much at the elementary school is that one of our biggest problems over the summer is keeping our teachers out of the building. Everyone always wants to get back in the building, when can I set up my classroom? When can I set up my bulletin boards? When can I start planning for next year? So we had a great group all summer long in working, setting up their rooms, setting up lessons for next year. When you get a chance, hopefully some will be down tomorrow, you will see that our hallways look extra bright and cheerful. Mr. Pettis and his team incorporated our school colors into the main hallway, and it looks great. We also have new treads on the fourth grade stairs, and our multipurpose room has been updated with a hardwired projector to avoid any problems with wireless transmissions. Always safety September, very important lessons for elementary school students, many who, it's, many of whom, it's their first time entering the school building. We've already conducted ten fire drills, last Friday, we did a bus drill in the morning, physical education is doing bus drills this week, and we will begin lockdown and stair chair drills this week as well. Our hegemony phonemic awareness program with kindergarten and first grade, we are often using elements of this program. Mrs. Lowe and Mrs. McDermott piloted this program and will help turn key professional development to our teachers. This consists of fast, fun, and effective ten-minute daily lessons delivering explicit instruction in critical phonemic awareness and early literacy skills, which fits seamlessly into our existing literacy instruction. We also have a new class at the elementary school this year, we have an integrated co-teaching fourth grade class, so we are piloting that in fourth grade and very excited about it. Science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, also known as our STEAM program. Mrs. Somwell and Mrs. Schindler are very excited that the STEAM department this year is using Spike Essentials kits from Legos. These kits are designed for hands-on building with digital coding, all while using Legos. We're hopeful that this program will help foster independent problem-solving and STEAM thinkers. Everybody's favorite program, Love on a Leash returns. Love on a Leash will return in October, according to Mrs. Nerulis, who is just in touch with, Mr., Miss, I'm sorry, in touch with the program about getting it up and started in October. We do have some sad news from Love on a Leash. One of our beloved therapy dogs, Remy, passed away this summer. Remy is a nice part of the elementary school, really beloved by students and staff, so that was some news that was a little tough to take. Of course, our counseling department will be on the lookout for any students exhibiting any type of problems, and we do have, we have actually many therapy dogs coming into the elementary school. So although there will be a replacement for Remy, we'll always remember Remy, who did a lot of great things for students at the elementary school. Our counseling department is up and running with mindfulness activities throughout the building, and we do have a busy September with events. September eighteenth will be our PTA welcome back meeting, September nineteenth, our kindergarten open house, September twenty sixth, our grades one through four open house, but most importantly, we will finish in time to get everybody to the high school for the bonfire. We are looking forward to a great school year focused on kindness and learning. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Mistress Shug, Hampton Bay's Middle School.
Good evening, welcome back, happy new year, very exciting time to be in school again, weather's beautiful. We had a really strong and positive start at Hampton Bay's Middle School, and really what Dr. D and I spent some time wrapping our heads around this summer was, you know, we have a, we have a special milestone that we achieved earlier this school year, last school year, I should say, art sweet sixteen. We're sweet sixteen now, we're sixteen years of age, and we're excited, right, did I do the math right?
You did it.
Sixteen? Just a second, I'm looking at Larry's face right now doing the math, and I'm getting nervous because he's better at math than me. So we're sweet sixteen, and with that comes a responsibility, right? It's a responsibility of where have we been, where are we now, and where are we going? And I think that, that really paused Dr. D and I to think about, you know, what's our priority? What are our priorities going into the new school year? And I think it comes down to this, it comes down to honoring our past, living in the moment with our students, and preparing them and building their futures and doing it together with students, with families, and with our staff as well. So I think with those three priorities in mind, we're ready to celebrate our sweet sixteen this school year. And we started off with an ambitious, competitive, and collaborative hiring season, like Mr. Clemmenson said, a bit unexpected at times, but we are, we're always ready and excited to embrace those challenges. And I really just want to take a moment to thank our leadership team for the support and the collaboration. It was really an awesome process that really yielded some phenomenal candidates for us coming into this new school year. And I just want to take a moment to introduce nine of our newest teachers in the middle school. So I'd like to just begin where this begins, which was with Mrs. Dayton, our beloved art teacher in the middle school, her retirement, her sort of unanticipated, unexpected, but sudden, not sudden retirement, where on the last day of school, she informed me that she was in fact preparing to retire. With that, within a couple of days, I was approached by one of our phenomenal special education math certified teachers, Adrian Gagliardi, who's been with us, this is her fifteenth year with us, and she expressed her passion and interest for the arts. She has multiple certifications, one of which is art, it turns out that art is her passion. So she wanted to put her hat in the ring to compete for this position, and that she did. She took nothing for granted, she left nothing to chance, and she competed like a new teacher, competing for a job that they wanted like nothing else. I really was so impressed, we were so impressed with Mrs. Gagliardi, again and again, coming back for multiple series of interviews and her degree of preparation and her excitement for embracing this new challenge in art. With that, of course, we had a vacancy, an enormous vacancy to fill in special education and math. And fortunately for us, we grow the farm team, and we always say to our teachers every day is a job interview. And nearby, not far away, was Victoria Iverone. Victoria's successfully done two leave replacements in the middle school, and she's the type of person that is solving our problems as they pop up for us, with certifications, with preparation, and with just this passion and drive for teaching, especially in middle school. Victoria competed for math positions and ultimately was the successful candidate to replace Adrian Gagliardi in special education seven and eight focused on math in the DSC program. With that, of course, we keep filling these holes, we keep seeing holes and filling holes, this was sort of just the domino effect, right? So with that, I just want to acknowledge the, I think it's five, if I have, if I have that counted correctly, five leave replacements that we filled, including math seven, eight, Amelia Go, who competed for a math position in the high school and in the middle school, and was a successful candidate to replace Victoria Iverone, who's replaced Crystal Whiffin, follow the bouncing ball, right? With that, we have Jill Oaks coming in for special education seven, eight, that's for Katrina Mowers Perdudo. Tracy Suchevsky, I have to practice this every day, pronouncing this name, Tracy Suchevsky comes in for Samantha Gunderson in English seven and eight. Samantha Teleska competed for a bilingual five, six dot, she's in for Narcie Mora. And where did I leave off? Christopher Scalone rounds it out with our low hire for Teresa Strano. Again, just phenomenal candidates, very excited to be here. We took this picture this morning together, and I have not seen bigger smiles in the middle school than these, these wonderful candidates up here. Just to round out our hiring season, John Fluster and I spent a lot of time together this summer working with our leadership team on identifying some really high-quality candidates for the health, physical education position, and we could not turn away from Sean Collins. He brings so much positive energy and passion for health, for wellness, and for physical education, as well as an extensive coaching background. He's really, really excited to be in Hampton Bay's, and Hampton Bay's Middle School especially. Last, but certainly not least, again, what's really great about hiring seasons is that you come across some real gems, and you want to have sometimes twenty spots to fill to put these, these great candidates, and a lot of times, we have to turn people away. And fortunately for us, we had a candidate, a diamond in the rough, her name is Cleo Shaughnessy, and I mention her only because she has health and physical education certifications, and she expressed passion for special, I'm sorry, she has health and physical education certifications and expressed passion for special education. She also plays the piano, she's a voracious reader, she's just a really well-rounded human being, and she's kind. And I think she just needed a chance to work every day in the middle school, and she grabbed it. And I'm so, I'm so excited to see her growth in the middle school, and she's one of our amazing teachers that we hired. Not, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the one hundred and forty-seven smiling faces that we saw this morning and said cheese, and then they said it, and they smiled. That's how you know they're fifth graders, because they said something and they smiled at seven forty-five this morning. That doesn't happen most of the time in middle school. Our fifth graders have been off to a great start, they're super excited, they're super pumped to be in middle school and really just focused on, on doing a great job. Dr. D and I had a roomful, a cafeteria full of parents, as we always do in the summertime, end of August. We invite families in, the parents are really excited, the fifth grade parents to be in the middle school. We led them through an orientation, and our counselors and teachers who are available in fifth grade came out to work with and spend time with and to help the students acclimate to their new school. And they're just really excited to be here, so I just want to point out those really special humans that are in those, those pictures up there. I wanted to just talk a bit about what Dr. D and I have kind of gotten to as far as the schedule. Dr. D, if I haven't said it recently, is a master, master scheduler. I've been very fortunate my entire career to work with some amazing creative minds who really have a grasp of the master's schedule, and Dr. D is among those people. I think, you know, one of the things that Dr. D is relentless about, he always has his teacher heart, very close to the work that we do in school leadership in the middle school, which is very important. He keeps me engaged in that as well. And I think that, you know, one of the things that we really started to look at with our teachers was really making sense of every part of the school day for a kid, really making sense of, you know, let's see if we can, you know, go from this class to that class, to that class, to that class, to the end of the day, and all of a sudden, kids are, you know, a light bulb is going off, and they're saying, that's really weird, I'm connecting first period to third period to ninth period to F school. So with that, we have opportunities to expand our electives, our elective offerings. And I want to just briefly mention a few that Dr. D has identified as opportunities, and our teachers are, are on board with this, they're fully embracing it. Some of our STEM offerings include financial literacy in grade six to eight, six through eight, and garden science, getting hands, kids' hands in the dirt, which I'm just loving that idea, in seven and eight. Expanded humanity offerings as well include news literacy, five through eight. We're really continuing to build on being named a lighthouse district from several years back with Mr. Carlson to really scaling that throughout the building. It's really exciting to see that happening, as well as historical headlines. In our social studies classes, sometimes we think, oh, I'm going to go into social studies and I'm going to hear about what happened one hundred, two hundred, five hundred, a thousand years ago, but we have our social studies teachers doing now with historical headlines is what's happening in everyday life that we want to talk about, that we want to grasp and compare to history and make those connections. So we're really excited about that as well. That's on the academic achievement side of middle school. On the other side, equally as important, is the developmentally responsive side. And I just want to highlight a few things that, priorities that we have identified, which includes getting our counselors into advisory periods. It includes really being purposeful with our minutes with advisory, plus any other available minutes that our teachers are afforded with students. We always talk about our who is your go-to person, that's not going to change. We are embracing restorative practices as a component of our discipline and our code of conduct, and also we're looking at community circles, really building community, building that sense of belonging in every middle school space available to us. Again, I feel like I talk a lot about Navians, but Navians, but we love it in the middle school, we really do. Our counselors are just in full force with Navians, and we're really looking at scaling that throughout the building with our teachers, really getting into the everyday conversation of what do you like and what are you good at, and have every fifth grader, every sixth grader, every seventh and eighth grader talking about that in, you know, live formats. We also are going to scale our universal screener, our screener for social emotional learning, which we piloted last year in sixth grade, we're going to scale that five to eight this year. So we're really excited about the possibilities of really gaining an understanding of where students are at with their social emotional wellness and where we can support them better or best. Maybe last, but certainly not least, we wanted to talk about, you know, just some old reliable staples that are really super important that we always look forward to. Watch for, start with Hello Week. That's a really important bridge for us to, to build with kids from the start, where every student is important, every student is seen, every student is valued, and that comes right out of the gate this month, as well as old reliable Patriots pen, which we're super excited about. I challenge our social studies teachers in grades six through eight, everybody to write it as an assignment. We always get some great responses and some really competitive essays. Sometimes we even, you know, earn, earn prizes and advancement to the county level and then some. So we're really excited to see that. Love on a leash, we definitely stole that from Mr. Mark, we're doing the middle school version of Love on a Leash, we're really excited to have Love on a Leash back in, in middle school. And again, we're going to pursue our fourth designation as a No Place for Hate school. Last year, we achieved the gold status, and we're already up and running with that. I wanted to just jump back to the I wanted to just jump back to the, to one point, the first point on the developmental responsive side, we had a really exciting series of conversations this summer, where, you know, we talked about moving from, you know, what's happened over the 16 years in middle school, and our consistent value for, you know, working with adolescents on what's important today, and what's important four years from now, and eight years from now, and then some. And a large part of that has been visits to college campuses and discussions, everyday discussions about, you know, what happens after high school, what are the options? Starting in fifth grade, we've done that for years and years, and it's continued to evolve. And one of the really exciting opportunities is that now it's, it's sort of enmeshed into the daily conversation, and our counselors are just taking off with it, and, you know, we're going on trips, and we're visiting colleges, and we're having these conversations as part of the naviance work, which is great. It gives us an opportunity to look at other lifelong learning pursuits, starting in middle school, really developing students' vocabulary and appreciation for concepts like, what is inspiration? What does it look, sound, and feel like? What is ambition, perspective, resilience, determination, triumphant synergy? Well, those words I just listed are our new team names. So when I've spoken in the past about SEC, or Big 12, or Big East, or SUNY, and so forth, we're transitioning toward these new terms. The teachers have fully embraced it, I think it's a real opportunity for us to build a dynamic culture, and really look at values that our students will take home with them, not just at the end of the school day, but into the summer, and into ninth grade, and after high school, and I really think that, you know, when we're talking about inspiration to fifth graders, and we're talking about determination with seventh and eighth graders, they're going to carry that, they're going to embody that, I really believe that begins in our advisory program, and I'm really appreciative of the willingness to engage in sort of shifting, involving with our programs as we embrace being 16 in the Hampton Bay's middle schools. So, I'm sorry, I could talk about middle school all night long. I think I went a little long, I think I jugged this a little bit, as I often do, that's an old reference, an old reference. That just means make it take longer to talk, but thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what it's like to Morgan it.
Yeah.
I've been told you get to speak at how many years you've been in the district, so I'm only two or three, so. Welcome back. We also have a number of not-so-new faces joining us at the high school. Ms. Ally Allegra will be joining our mathematics department, as well as our athletics team, she is leading the girls cross-country, and is now part of the women's lacrosse program as well. Dr. Zaleski, who did a really great job last year, who will be joining our science team as a chemistry teacher. Ms. Kuros, who you met during our last meeting, coming from a long line of guidance counselors herself, what a great mentor to have than your father, who's been a guidance counselor for over 20 years. So I've already asked her, I'm like, do you call him on the way home? She's like, no, that's all we talk about, like, just about everything that I do. April Sexton is joining our mathematics team, and Ms. Van Vleek is our new school nurse, so it's great to have all these people in. One thing I can say about our new staff members, they've all come to me after school asking how they can already improve. I said, be easy on yourself, it's only the third day, but I really appreciate the motivation. What is going on in Hampton Bay's? We're really embracing the key as our new symbol, our key to our future, but we're still sticking to that every second counts here. We started with our freshman orientation. Freshman orientation for ninth graders sometimes is tough, they have summer josh, some families are still spending those last moments outside of the Hamptons. I never leave the Hamptons during the summer, but that is something that a lot of our families do. We had a really, really amazing orientation. One of the best things about our orientation is it's student-led. All students are speaking in every single aspect of our school. They are going and talking to you about art, they're talking about co-curriculars, they're talking about the ins and outs, the advice that you really need. And we had a really amazing PTSA hosted luncheon. It really, really got me juiced for this year. The excitement of our parents, it was seen in the kids playing with these giant beach balls, and having a student raffle, the excitement has really carried over into September, so I was really, really happy to start off the school year with that. During freshman orientation, Mr. Richard also had coffee with the principal, was well-attended. We planned he would be there for about 20 to 30 minutes, and I kept looking at my watch, we're texting, and so I said, what's going on? He goes, they had so many questions, I couldn't leave. So we had to modify our plans that day, but it was really awesome to see that many parents come out at 10:30 on a Wednesday in late August. We have started senior seminar, we are always talking about the different pathways students can take after they leave our school district, and that's really what we're get down to business. We have a number of administration members meeting with our seniors, Mr. Clemmensen, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Ferraro, Mr. Richard, myself, Ms. Fox. We are meeting with their guidance counselors, and really what we're doing is figuring out what are all those important things that we have to do in the next couple weeks and months. A lot of seniors think that right now, June is so far down the road, it will be here in a blink of an eye, and our guidance counselors work really well with them, and making sure that everybody here has a plan, and that that plan will be executed when they are receiving their diploma. Grade-level assemblies were carried out by Mr. Richard and I, we were also joined by our school resource officer, Terry Tedesco. It's really the do's and don'ts, but one thing that we focused on was really the do's, you know, what can you do here? And even if you're a freshman or a senior, I think people left that meeting knowing what to do. Really, how are they going to have the most successful year possible? We have our open house and first PTSA meeting on September 19th, and our SUNY College Tour kicks off on the 23rd to 24th. One thing I've been doing this week has been speaking to a lot of seniors, because they want senior privileges, and the way that you get senior privileges is you have great attendance, you have great discipline record, and really you present your plan. It's really one of the final conversations that you're having with Mr. Richard and I, is to get those senior privileges by proving that you know exactly what you need to accomplish this year. So many students have referenced the SUNY College Tour as changing what they were thinking about doing, where they were thinking about going, understanding that we have public Ivies in SUNY Binghamton, unbelievable schools, Cortland and Albany, and only out to just a quick ride up state, and a lot of students have referenced that that is a university that they would like to attend. Our AP program is going strong. One thing I want to highlight is this year, we have 34 AP scholars, that's an increase from 16 students last year, so an increase of 18 students. We're holding at 159 for AP students, and we've actually increased our enrollment up to 332 by 12 students. We have 18 AP courses, we added AP Chem and AP Euro as they are offered on the off-year. Number of things to celebrate with our capstone diplomas and our AP Center of Research certificate students. What's new, I was tempted to write what's cooking. Chef Curtis is doing an unbelievable job with the culinary program, it's one of the most popular programs to get into. It's a tough conversation talking to a parent when they say, why didn't I get into basic food? Well, because over 100 students are trying to get into just 40 spots. One thing that I was talking to Mr. Clemmensen with was, could we make a bridge between basic food prep and our culinary program, which is an intensive two-period-a-program, you can get college credit at the culmination? Cooking with confidence is that bridge. It's for the student that says, you know what, I really enjoyed basic food prep, but culinary is not going to be my career path. It might help me get a job during the summer, it might build on some skills that I found for myself during a job that I had last summer. So really super excited to see that, plus it's another snack during the day that is going to be created in room 27, so.
For us, too.
Exactly, yeah. Everybody knows Mr. Clemmensen always uses the auditorium door going past 27. Real great achievement, boys JV volleyball is up and running, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Moran are coaching that team, really super excited to see how that program fares this season, and how it grows in the future. Homecoming weekend, which is a lie, it's really homecoming week. We have a number of things to highlight, especially our bonfire on Thursday, the 26th, followed by Friday night, we have a boys varsity football game, the boys varsity program, football program is back. I talked to the coaches, they're really excited, the students are excited, they are really chomping at the bit to get out there, their first game is this week for sure, I'm winning the tournament. Girls varsity volleyball also has a game that day, a little bit earlier, around 5:30, so there's going to be a super-packed campus, parking will be at a premium. And Saturday, we finish with our parade at 10:00 AM, starting at middle school, heading to the high school, girls varsity soccer game at noon, and then finally, our dance is from 6 to 8. Students only, sorry, board members. That's it for the high school, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Ferr, we mentioned at the August board meeting, some work that's being done on e-bikes, and how to manage their safe use on campus and to and from school, so Mr. Ferr is going to take us through the work he's been doing.
Hi, everyone, it's nice to hear all the updates and everything going on, and I'm sorry about your loss for renting. E-bikes, so over the summer, we've seen a large increase of just generally e-bikes everywhere. I see it in my town, I see it around here, you know, the genie's out of the bottle there everywhere. Also, that the local emergency, you know, services have kind of highlighted that there's been a lot of accidents also, involving students, involving adults, everyone, so that kind of led us to start, Mr. Clemmensen, I talking about this policy, and the proposed revision for it. All right, so the first misconception that's out there, and first thing we're highlighting in the policy, is that Suffolk County and New York both align, Suffolk County and New York both align within, in law, that no one under 16 can ride an e-bike. All right, when we say e-bike, it could be e-scooter also, so no one under that age should be, should be using them, so that's kind of where our policy begins. We cannot, we cannot police what happens once kids cross the threshold into the sidewalk, but there's no reason why legally they should be driving, riding them to school. Some e-bikes, we understand you can, you can disable the pedal assist, so they could truly be a bicycle, or you can, you know, enable the motor to help you, but we can police on-campus conduct, all right, so that's where the policy really begins, as far as, as far as Hampton Bay's dictates. Bikes of all kinds, including e-bikes, are not permitted to be ridden on campus, all right, so there should be no reason why students should be using them on campus. The security guards have been instructed to, you know, remind, remind students of that. I know sometimes it's hard if it's Friday night, and, and there's no one around, and kids are leaving game or something like that, but bikes should not be ridden on campus under any, under any circumstances. I found out that there are three classifications of e-bikes, they're classified as one, two, and three, and that basically means how the bike is structured, how the motor accelerates, and ultimately the top speed. In New York State, class one and class two e-bikes are the only legal e-bikes. Class three, I think the speed is 22 miles an hour, don't quote me on that exactly, but class three are not permitted in New York State, or any bikes that have been modified to go faster than that. All right, so I mean, I think back to when I was a kid, kids had dirt bikes and go-karts, and they would take the governor off and make it go faster, any sort of modification is not permitted. So again, the guards have been instructed, and the administrative team, to look for things like that, and it's a sticker that's right on the bike. And lastly, the other concern area we're seeing is that these bikes contain lithium-ion batteries. Lithium-ion batteries, if you know anything about, about them, that can be extremely volatile, especially lithium-ion batteries that are not produced in the United States under certain regulations, or passed through our regulations. If a student, for whatever reason, if, if, you know, they crash the bike or something like that, it could, it could be compromised, and they are extremely dangerous, extremely flammable, I'm sure Larry would not want them in the building for that, for that reason alone. So e-bikes should not have their battery removed, and the battery should not be brought into the building. We're going to handle this like we handle all, all things in our code of conduct. Initially, we'll start by educating students and just clarifying what the, what the policy is, and after that, we have to then step it up to a level where, you know, you're violating the code of conduct, and that'll be an abhorrence violation, or unsafe campus conduct violation. So that's what's, in a nutshell, what's in the proposed policy. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. While none of the slides that you saw tonight were AI-generated, AI is a tool that is making its presence more and more consistent in the world today, so Mike is going to talk a little bit about, Mr. Carlson, excuse me, is going to talk a little bit about the work being done on developing some parameters on our responsible use adult and kids around AI.
Thank you. Good evening. Just to bring you along, last spring, we had a BOSI model school rep come to our school, worked with focus teams from each of our school buildings to take a deep dive into the digital fluency standards for the elementary school, and all through K to 12, which involve computational thinking, digital literacy, cybersecurity, at all levels, which is, it was a great collective effort, and our first effort in building capacity with respect to AI. For many people last spring, it was new, some people were hesitant to use it as teachers, but it's important that we start to, you know, dive in the pool and start to understand, you know, how does this work, not only in our personal lives, but how it could benefit our professional lives, and then in doing so, how do we move that into our classroom and work with our students? So over the summer, we offered a curriculum writing project to our teachers, Kevin Singh from the middle school, and Caitlin Mareska from the high school, both agreed to start to design some professional development that we rolled out during our superintendent's conference day, and will continue to roll out throughout the rest of the year. It was an introduction to many, again, we're in a building capacity phase with our, with our teachers, they've created a collective effort among everyone to share ideas, and, you know, things that they feel are important and useful in the classroom. It's important to us, too, that they created a positive aspect to AI. There's a good deal of fear out there about what is it, people think that it's just thinking for you, and we wanted people to understand, or teachers to understand, that it has not only positive uses for teachers, but for students. And for teachers, it could be as easy as just generating additional questions that bring us to a different depth of knowledge for our students. If we have a writing assignment, it could be rubrics that they didn't think about, or possibly, how do they incorporate Bloom's taxonomy into their questioning? For students, I think some of them are at a level where, yes, let me put in the question and see what the answer is, but we want to get them to get to a point where they're using it to give feedback, where maybe there's not someone else present, or a form of collaboration, or a way of brainstorming. What we are going to do this year is present a universal policy for use of AI in every classroom, so that it's consistent, and the four bullet points at the bottom are a summation of that. Students that are going to use it are either going to be utilizing it as part of a project in classroom already, or they're going to have to ask prior approval from the teacher. We're going to have to talk about responsible and ethical use of it, too, because unlike search engine where you plug something in and it just searches, AI will start to consume the information and utilize it, so sometimes when things are confidential, we need students to understand, and teachers, too, that what we put into AI is going to show up somewhere else later, it's something that accumulates, you know, what you put into it. And all of this is so that we can have students understand how to maintain academic integrity and responsibility. There are search engines that will look for AI-generated pieces. Not only, you know, we have that capacity with our Turn It In program here at the high school, but it's important for, before they go to college, to understand how to utilize it, how to cite it, and how to be straightforward if and when we're using it. And overall, we want to make sure that AI is being used to assist and not to substitute knowledge, so, thank you.
All right, good. So, thank you to everybody who presented tonight. To kick off the school year, through the year, we'll hear from different departments on some important initiatives that they're working on, we could be here all night if we do everybody all month, so we'll stagger through the year as the timing's appropriate. I just want to spend a couple minutes and talk about the look ahead on the calendar. You heard so many of the activities that are going on in the buildings, welcoming people back and jump-starting the new year, but I want to draw your attention to two of them. One, on September 21st, we're taking a Hampton Bay's district team. One, on September 21st, we're taking a Hampton-based district team, Mrs. Colton there in the back, we're taking Johnny and a number of students from the Select Jazz Band and Select Choir and Chef Connor's Culinary Students, who are going to be showcased at the state level at the New York State Council Superintendent's Fall Conference. So the Select Choir and Jazz Band have been practicing, rehearsing every single day after school. They sound remarkable, they're gonna do three joint pieces before an audience of 1,000, and then afterwards, at a welcome reception, welcome marketplace for the conference, our culinary students will be demonstrating with a student narrator, apple crepes using Saratoga apples and a Marscapone cream cheese. So if you're around here at 1:45 in the next week, we're taste-testing in room 27, so.
That's been twice.
Yeah, I'm there a lot. So we're super excited to showcase Hampton Bays on that state level. And then the second that I want to mention and just highlight as a teaser is an initiative that Mrs. Fox has been working on, and that will debut on October 2nd, and that's our English Language Learner and Bilingual Parent Partnership Night. So a series of, a series of segments, a series of evening gatherings will take place throughout the year. That's your teaser, as it develops, and after the first one, we'll have Mrs. Fox present on the success and the objective of that, but it is exactly what the title says, to build strong parent partnerships. You'll hear Mrs. Fox talk about home-school relationship a lot, and how when that's better, everything's better, and that's stronger, everything's stronger. So we are quickly into the fall, October 5th, just a great thing that we offer at the SAT here at school, home court advantage does matter, and so we'll do that, just as we have over the last several years. Lots of information tonight, more to come throughout the year as we go through the twists and turns of a quick school year. It will be June before we know it, but any questions or comments on tonight's report?
Okay, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you all for your hard-working dedication, and Happy New Year, as everybody's mentioned. We will continue with, we're gonna do a consent agenda for Business and Finance 4A to 4B. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Student Services on his own, I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will do personnel from 6A to 6G. And let me just see something here. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
6H, we're gonna do on its own, because I have to recuse myself from that, so I need a motion for 6H.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and then we will finish the consent agenda from 6I to 6K. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's get the seven, we've got a lot of pages here tonight. Yep, 7A to 7C, unless there's any questions. Need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment, number eight. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The Board President will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon agenda needs. I think we're okay. So then with that, I need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all again. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.